The champ is here. 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 The champ is here.
That's right, the champ is here. Loved by many, hated by people, respected by all, was second to none. That's right, the Commish Radio Show back again. In this segment, we're talking to Philip Kingston, who's running for county commissioner in Dallas County. How you doing? You doing alright?
Good, Ed.
Good to see you, man.
Thanks for having me.
It's been a long time, man. Last time we saw each other is what? Couple of months back.
I saw you at the Allen Brooks dedication.
Right, 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 right. Seems like I always see you around at those type of things, you know? Allen Brooks dedication, then we removed the Confederate statues. He was involved in that, that deal here. So I want to go ahead and first-
I got in all kinds of trouble for that.
I know you did. I want to first commend you for that, you know? Because you were one of the first Dallas city councilmen, black or white, you know, to speak out against, well, the Confederate statues.
Yeah, and you know, pardon me, we, uh, we wound up selling that Robert E. Lee statue and covered the cost of everything else we did, removing all the other monuments, putting in the Brooks Memorial, all that stuff. And now that's just down on Kelsey Warren's golf course in West Texas.
Who's Kelsey Warren?
The billionaire behind Energy Transfer Partners Pipeline Company, whose son, the park is named after. Clyde Warren is his son.
Okay, okay, okay. Goes to show where the money's at, right? Follow the money, follow the money.
He had an eye for that Lee statue. I guess he wanted it, but we didn't. I thought it would be fun to melt it down and make the Allen Brooks Memorial out of the statue, but they made me sell it instead.
Well, I understand. Now, you catch a lot of grief on the city council. You caught some of that before. Why?
It's a good question. Um, the way you have to do things on the city council is with pressure. Um, people don't analyze an issue and look at the data and say, here's really the way that I see this turning out, and here's how it ought to go. They all come from their own backgrounds, and they have their own people, and they have their own voices that they listen to, and it's just as valid as yours. But you need to find the way to make them feel like your proposal is meritorious, that they should go along with you.
So like it was their idea?
That's one way to do it if you can. Sometimes, though, it's a matter of getting the people that they know and trust to tell them, look, you might be wrong on this. You might need to think about this in a different way. And sometimes, you just have to build the coalition you can build, and then you vote on it, and you know, the chips fall where they may. And the people who are on the losing end of it sometimes have no way to express their frustration about that other than to say nasty things about you. And I think I've been the victim of that in some instances. And it's also taught me a lesson, which is, if you wind up on the losing end, just keep your mouth shut. Don't be saying nothing nasty about the people who won.
Oh, so you've done that before in the past?
Well, I don't think I have, but I don't, I don't want to be that way. I don't think that's how our politics ought to work. It ought to be a question of, look, we had an honest debate, and here's where the votes fell out, and let's go on down the road. It's not, it's not a personal thing. You're trying to do the people's work. It's not about the, it shouldn't be about the policymaker. It ought to be about the people.
Okay. Now, that's city council. Now, how many years do you serve on the city council?
Six.
Six?
And I'm mostly healed.
And mostly what?
I'm mostly healed.
Oh, you're mostly healed? I thought, okay. So you, you, you ready to go back again and fight again now? Now, why are you fighting there to be on Dallas? I'm looking at your shirt.
Not bad, right?
Uh, for Dallas County, a commissioner. Tell us about that political experience.
So the county's in an amazingly unique position right now with all of the infrastructure money and the COVID relief money. And the county's going to be the lead agency on deploying these funds. Um, and these funds need to be spent on big-time public infrastructure investment that changes people's way of life, that can make our county economy more sustainable. And so that's stuff like affordable housing, and that's stuff like transit, and that's getting jobs to where people live. Um, and that's, it's such a huge opportunity. I could hardly resist it. But also, we had redistricting. And I used to be represented by Teresa Daniel, a wonderful person. And on November 4th, I got moved into a different district where I was represented by J.J. Koch, who's the last elected Republican in Dallas County. And he has two active lawsuits against the county because he disagrees-
Now, you, you, you did something that most other people didn't do. Now, everybody been coming here, they ain't mentioning the opponent's name. You're not doing it. You just mentioning her name. That's fine with me.
Well, if you're running to say to the people that the incumbent is wrong, that he's not the right person for the job, you need to explain why, and people need to understand.
I just said, you know, most people come here, they don't, they don't say who it is, but you just, you just, I won't, just said. So tell me about J.J. Koch.
J.J. is a, I always thought of him as a nice man. I knew him before he went on, on the county commissioners' court. He lived in my neighborhood. Um, but on-
How close does he live to you?
He used to live about 10 blocks from me. Now he moved into Preston Hollow.
Oh, okay.
But he, he used to live over in, in the M Streets in East Dallas. And, uh, so I didn't have any problem with him until he went on the commissioners' court, and he's, he's acted a fool, essentially. He creates all kinds of conflict, but not for the purpose of changing policy or improving anything. He's really just doing political theater. It's, he, he doesn't have much way to create a positive, um, legacy in policy at the county because he just does, is not able to build a coalition. And so instead, he chooses to grab headlines and get the news and-
Such as what type of headlines does he grab?
Well, he, you know, he refused to wear a mask when he had the mask mandate at commissioners' court and was removed from the commissioners' court meeting. Um, and then, and he sued, I think, the county twice now over its COVID policies. Um, and this is a particularly dumb thing to do, legally speaking, because we're under a declared disaster for the pandemic. And when you have a declared disaster, the state law, the emergency provisions of state law, give this authority to do public health rules to the county judge, not, not to the commissioners' court, not to anybody else, but to the county judge. And so J.J.'s, um, I guess his protest against this stuff is very pointless. Um, and his lawsuits against the county are merely wasting our money.
Now, how's it wasting the money? If you, you can sue, right? That's, but how's it wasting the money?
Well, the county is forced to defend itself. It has to expend the resources that it has to fight a frivolous lawsuit rather than to do the normal work of county government.
Okay. Now, before we go to our break, I want to ask you this. Uh, in your race, uh, you're running in a Democratic primary.
Correct.
Obviously, you are, you say it's Democrat on it. Are there any other Democrats running in this race?
There are three other Democrats running. Um, and two of them I know pretty well, and the other one I really have not gotten to know because she doesn't come to the forums and stuff. But Tom Irvin, good friend of mine from East Dallas, and Andy Summerman, a lawyer from Preston Hollow, both very, very good people. Um, I'll say their names because I'm, I'm honored to be running against people that good.
Well, that's good. We gonna leave it alone on that one. Since you're honored to be running against them, and you say their names, and you say you're honored. We gonna play a couple of drops, and when we come back, we'll talk a little bit more. All right? All right, here we go.
Hey, this is Maria Acevis, and I'm running for the 192nd Civil District Court, and I'm listening to the Commish Radio Show. Tune in.
This is John Cruzo, your Democratic candidate for district attorney for Dallas County. Thank you to the Commish and Ed Gray and the Commish Radio Show.
We gonna go back into, uh, qualifications. I did not bring them to you.
Other people got it worked, though, you know? I was advocating for it. I was still the white guy, you know? That the, the people like Mike Walker, you know? That, that, he got the votes of eight.
All right, you ready to go back to your, whatever? Yeah, you got a cool joke drop on there? Yeah, okay. What about some others of other people? And then we are looking for the blue suit. We have time between the microphones.
This is Marquise Hawkins, candidate for House District 100, and you're listening to the Commish Radio Show. Ed Gray.
That's right, Commish Radio Show back again. We making it look good. And if you were listening to that, that was, uh, "Make It Look Good" by Janelle Grace. CDs, on CD babies. You can also contact me. You got the number. You've been calling me up, so, you know, call me again. We'll drop a CD your way. But one thing we want to drop your way, we want to drop some knowledge your way as well. So we dropping the knowledge, introducing the topic, and we dropping it. So we're talking to Philip Kingston, who's running for Dallas County Commissioner again. Again, I'd like to bring you Philip Kingston. All right? Okay. All right, so we were talking during the break. We were just kicking it for a little bit about, uh, well, we were kicking about a lot of good things, but the things that we want to talk about now is moving forward. We talked about some historical activism that occurred the last couple of years. But now, as we move forward in the 2022, what do you hope to bring to the Dallas County Commissioners Court if you're elected?
I think one thing that will be fun, and I think beneficial for Dallas County is-
Fun? Politics is fun?
Yeah. Well, I, so on the county commissioners' court, you got Clay Jenkins.
Okay.
A county judge, thinks he's done a fabulous job. You got my former commissioner, Teresa Daniel. She's still on there, but I moved out of her district. They redistricted me. You got the commissioner, the only, the only person who doesn't need the introduction, John Wiley Price.
How do you get along with him?
You know, pretty good on some stuff. And then other times, he's, he can be upset with me, which I think is pretty typical of a lot of people's relationship with him. Um, but he's a guy that I know that I can work with. We worked together on marijuana decriminalization.
Explain that.
Uh, he had been working on that at the county for a long time to try to get people out of the jail who've been locked up on marijuana charges. And I was working on it from the city side, saying, we're gonna, to the police, we're not gonna arrest people for that anymore. We're gonna do cite and release. We give them a citation and not take them to jail, which is not, I would rather just like not enforce the marijuana laws at all. But I never have had that power. I'm not in the legislature. Um, but it's a step, and it removes violence from the system. It removes, it makes the system much more efficient to operate, and it's way better. It criminalizes people who come in contact with the police much less than taking them to the jail and putting them through the booking process. Um, and so he and I worked together on that. And then you got Elba Garcia, who's been a friend for a long time, and, uh, you know, does a great job with like the facilities in Dallas County. She's just finished remodeling the records building, which is an amazing building now. And I, I just think that in that group of the five of us, we have relationships that are gonna allow us to work together in a much more collaborative way than has been possible on the commissioners' court before now.
Now, what is the makeup of the commissioners' court now?
The, the number one question we get when we say, I'm running for commissioners' court, is, what the hell's the commissioners' court? That's like, that's what everybody wants to know. So it runs your county government. It's Clay Jenkins is the chair, as the county judge.
Like the county mayor.
Exactly.
Right.
And, and then there are four commissioners, each one of which represents a quarter of the county. So 2.6 million people in Dallas County. Each one of those districts is 600 or some odd thousand people. It's, they're big, big districts. And the things they provide to you are essentials, really essential things, like the jail. Operating the jail and the sheriff's department is a county function. As we've all come to find out, in COVID, public health is a function of county government. That, that's where those decisions get made, and it's where the rules get made. It's super important. The county also is the sponsor organization for Parkland and for the Community College District. Those two are independent taxing entities, but they also are, um, in the county government system and collaborate with the commissioners' court for stuff like expansion or acquisition of property, the things that they need to do to accomplish their missions. And then the county has all of this infrastructure money that's coming in from the federal government. But I'll tell you, the thing that is at the top of people's minds right now is the elections department.
Okay, how so?
The county runs your elections, and it has run your elections in Dallas County in a very transparent and fair way for a lot of years. But as you know, and as I think most of your listeners know, all that's under attack by the state-level Republicans right now, and they're creating all of these laws that are causing seniors ballots to get rejected and people to be denied access to voting. Um, and those, those, those rules are targeted at black people and people of color, for sure. Um, they're trying to keep those people from voting. And the county elections department can become a real defense against these attacks.
Now, that is pretty big right now with elections. And people say election-
It's important.
Some folks say election fraud, which never does occur. So, uh, it never does. It's very, very small.
He's right.
Very small. So when it comes down to it, uh, the, the makeup of your district, is it primarily Democratic or is it Republican?
The way they redrew it, it has become a Democratic district. If it had been a district in 2020, it would have voted 54.6% for M.J. Hager. And, uh, I like M.J. Hager, but that's about as close to the generic Democrat as I can come up with. And so I think, I, I think I'm, I might overperform her a little bit in this district.
So it's a leaning Democratic district?
Correct.
How did that happen? I mean, you know, most people vote basically at status quo, but this particular time, Dallas has the opportunity or could possibly turn completely blue and be completely Democrats on the county commissioners' court?
Probably will.
Probably will.
And the reason is, is that the commissioners' court gets to vote on the new map. Um, and they, they changed the makeup of District 2 to where it's gonna be a bluer district. But it's also, it's fair.
So like he who has to go makes the rule, huh?
Well, there is some of that. But with a dist, with a county as blue as Dallas is, like a 68% Democratic county, it's actually fair that those seats wind up being Democratic. They're not drawn in funny shapes.
There's no gerrymandering in this?
It's not really gerrymandered, not nearly like what we see on the state level. And, and so I don't know, the District 2 that I'm running to represent is a fairly compact district. It is, it doesn't have weird shapes in it. So I, you know, I don't know that you can complain much, as much as a Republican that there's not an opportunity for you. The, the lack of opportunities because you have too few voters.
Now, you just stated that that district went 54.6 for, uh, the Democratic nominee for senator.
Right.
Uh, how can you get the vote out? You know, that was that election, and this is another election, midterm election. There's normally a drop-off with Dems during midterms. Can you get the vote out?
There's a drop-off on both sides in the midterms. But with Beto at the top of the ticket, and Mike Collier, and Rochelle Garza, who I think will be our Attorney General nominee, spending their money at the top of the ticket. And I'm, by the way, am no slouch at raising and spending money. I'll be doing it also. I think that we will drive plenty of excitement to the polls in November. I, I, I'm gonna work hard toward it, but I feel confident.
Now, working hard, obviously, you dress working hard. I'm in a suit. You, obviously, I'm not walking and knocking on doors. So you, you're doing that these days?
Oh, yeah. We had, uh, me and about seven other candidates met at a Mexican restaurant in Farmer's Branch this morning and knocked out 350 doors in a couple hours.
Seven other folks?
Yep.
So you're block walking and you tagging the door? Are you actually talking to people or?
Got caught lots of people at home today. It was a good day.
Okay, so you're not like knocking the door and then just hanging and then moving on?
No, no, no. I like to talk to people.
How has COVID affected this campaign? Affected your campaign?
It's a good question. You, the Democrats, a lot of Democrats chose not to do in-person canvassing in 2020.
It hurt.
And it hurt. It hurt bad. So what we're doing is, we mask up. We stand way back from the door. A lot of people are not too uncomfortable with this, but we want to make sure that if they come to the door, that they don't feel like we have taken a risk we didn't need to take.
Right.
Now, I've gotten every shot that they'll give me. Um, but we, we just stay masked up, and we try to be real respectful of people. But people are okay with having some interaction again because they want, you know, Democratic voters want to hear from their candidates. They, they love getting mail. They love all the multimedia that we can send their way. But it just makes a difference when somebody's at your doorstep.
So you've been sending out mailers as well?
I've sent out two mailers, and we got another two in the pipeline. And because it's 600,000 people, we're mailing into 47,000 households. And, uh, these mailers cost a little bit of money.
It costs a little money, huh? And you've already sent out two of them already?
Correct.
And you have two in the pipeline?
Right.
That's two in the pipeline before election or?
Correct.
Okay. Wow, you really are raising a lot of money there.
You, you have to, and I've been-
I mean, I'm just saying because you got four mailers out, and no one's actually voted yet.
Yeah, I mean, you have to be, and I'm fortunate because in my career, both as a lawyer, but also politically, I've been blessed to work with a lot of people who have the resources to support me in this run, and they've been generous in doing so.
So what type of lawyer are you?
Uh, I'm a commercial litigator. Um, but because of my experience on city council and I experienced arguing at the legislature.
Experience arguing, period, huh?
Yeah, arguing, period. And I, I like to call myself a public advocate, but yes, I argue. Um, the, uh-
I'm gonna use that the next time someone that talks to me. I'm just advocating. I'm not doing anything.
Yeah, it's just advocacy. It's advocacy. Um, the, people hire me now mostly to be a consultant for questions that have mixed regulatory, legal, and political implications. So I get hired as a lobbyist a lot and a consultant.
Where'd you go to school at?
My law school training was at Baylor. I graduated in '99.
And where before that?
I was at Trinity University in San Antonio.
Okay, you from, uh, San Antonio?
Grew up there.
So why'd you move to Dallas?
Um, Dallas is one of the very best litigation markets in the world. Um, it's actually superior to a lot of other cities in the United States because Texas law is beneficial for lawyers seeking to try lawsuits. So Dallas and Houston are really on par with any other place in the United States for litigation. And the United States is the top place for litigation in the world. So it was a, it's a question of coming to where the best jobs were and where the best lawyers were to compete against.
Okay. Now, I'll ask you this question, and then we'll, we'll, uh, have you ever done a radio drop before?
Uh-huh. Didn't we do one when I was here before?
Yeah, we did. We got it. Hey, do you have that old Philip Kingston one? Let's see if we got that one somewhere in there. Yeah. Play that one for Grinns while he's, while Angelo's doing that. You know, we'll, we'll do that. Because the last time around, uh, we kicked it out. You, good memory, good memory. But what was, uh, what would you say would be the three things that you would bring to commissioners' court?
Well, the first is experience. Um, the, of all the people in the race, including the incumbent, nobody has the level of experience I can bring to the table. Um, that one's super important because it leads to the second one. The second one is being ready on day one.
Wait a minute, go back. You just did some shade. I was writing, but I was still with me.
You want me to repeat the shade?
Yeah, I already got, but just say it again. I just, you know, you, you thought it was gonna pass that one by me just slide there. You know? Okay, go back there.
It's, it, look, it's-
Including the incumbent.
Including the incumbent. It's, it's something nobody can replicate because nobody had the experience I had of six years on city council and a lot of big policy wins for the city. And so the other thing that I know is exactly how the mechanisms of county government work. And I've argued before the commissioners' court many times. Um, as I tell people, I don't, I don't need to know where the bathroom is when I go down to commissioners' court, and they already know my name. I don't, I barely have to fill out the little speaker's card. Um, so those are two big, important things to get things done on immediately when we start. But the third thing is just progressive democratic politics. Um, I, I have a really strong history as a really good progressive, and you just got finished talking to Councilwoman Hill, and we met in Local Progress, which is a convening of local elected officials around progressive policy ideas.
Progressive. You're not scared to say you're progressive? Why?
Progressivism is the lifeblood of the new Democratic Party, and it is providing all of the energy. It provides all of the new activists and organizers and people who will work for you in the field because people are, people get excited about Medicare for All. People do not get excited about, uh, reforming private health insurance. People get excited about criminal justice reform. People do not get excited about police reform. You know, the, the, it is the energy of the party. It's the lifeblood of where we need to go.
All right, so you said key words, criminal justice reform and police reform. Are they the same?
No. No, no, no. And you, you see this in Minneapolis. Um, you know, the, the, the city council in Minneapolis is very progressive, and they had in place in, in the police department many of the things that you would want to see if you're talking about police reform. They, they had a lot of good policies in place, yet they still had the, you know, the worst police tragedy, the most galvanizing police tragedy in forever, in the George Floyd murder. And, you know, there, there has to be a different way of doing these things. Also, criminal justice reform is just much broader. It's, it's, you know, how many people do we want in the jail every night? There's 6,000 tonight. I think less would be better.
6,000, that's capacity.
Yeah. I mean, it, you know, if, if, if we want to spend less on county government or have more money to spend on positive things in county government, we've got to get that jail population down.
All right, gotta get that jail population down. Think Angelo, you back? Hey, but you know what? You know what we'll do? We're gonna do a drop in a few. But, you know, as we get ready to go to a close, we want to talk about voting during this third. We got three shows there. Three shows. And during this third show, we're gonna talk about voting and getting the vote out.